We're going live, just so you know, the microphones are.
Not as an attendee. I know, it's being in the tent.
I know.
Did he, uh, ran through those?
Well, can I? Compared to when we were there in March. And this is like.
He drives on the side.
How are you?
Don't worry.
No one would know?
No one would know?
So we went to the one bar.
You're good. Looking at it on the phone. On your leg.
Honestly, I think you're a lot. You're surprisingly impressive.
Did you look up for a local?
I got no problem with that.
See how long the screen is? Are going up and down? Yeah. That's exactly. So I think we have to see.
Dreams. Dream see. Alright.
That's what I write. What I write. I took the shoes off.
Here you go.
I'm not even bothering. Did you have a party? I was. That's where you were. Oh, no, sorry, I did. I couldn't know you were saying, yes, I did go. I did go.
Oh, good.
Please someone back.
Yeah.
An hour and a half long.
They teach.
Yeah. Fire apartments.
Sound of a fireplace.
Yeah. But I love.
You know, I started going to work. No. Whatever. The brown. You know, my.
I was so down. Yeah. We're, we're mindful. We got hit our area. We got some part.
No, not.
Spread this area. I'm trying to say like. I rock. Really. I had just twelve hours. Three, four hours over. Four to thirty.
That coldness. D C just cold.
I have way.
Close.
Okay. I'm. I have. I don't have CBS and NBC. Whenever new. Twelve days. You ever get. The range. I have a great dream. But I was more of a thing. Top of shit instead of stand by point oh nine. So that's. I never. There's a lot of weird problems. How much? Seven. So I'm. Oh, okay. Oh, we would say, okay, yeah, I got it. We're talking like that much. Yeah. Breathe it. I walk down. I mean, I guess it's not good. Stream wreck. Ten thousand. Yeah, I gotcha. I just thought. Hard skin was just seeping out. That's what I was saying. I had. I got three or four. We can't. Can't, can't. We gotta bring. This station's. We just. And as we're. Five. So. I'm sure. He goes. Come out of the floor. He goes. I think for the. But if you're talking, if you're going.
Yeah, but from other. Lower. Other.
Those. Yeah. House.
You said the next one.
Home. You're. Right. Move. By a hundred. Feel a lot.
Are you in a pressure?
It was in the settlement.
Yes. I have. To me.
From everyone's.
Yeah. I got. Pressure.
Thirty. That's just the chief. Words.
You have fun out there today?
As funny as you could.
Yeah. We did see, yeah.
But it was only that.
Yeah. Yeah, it was. I saw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Was in L A.
Hello, Doris, how are you?
Good, how are you, Jim?
Good.
Welcome. Now it's better. It's better.
Do you have any others?
That last. Raging. And it's. It didn't last. Yeah.
Six inches of.
Yeah.
Hey, Stevie. How are you? Danny, Charlie. What was neat?
How are you, Dave?
We're all by ourselves tonight.
Yeah, no. I brought him a packet, so he'll be. Should he watch it here?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I could see it. I could see it. Like during the summer.
Did you get any water?
Uh, in our basement, yeah.
You do? You always get it?
We paved our driveway. And it's gotten worse.
Oh, yeah. I never used to get it, but I got up just a tiny bit this morning. I've got. My gutters are better now. I got one gutter. It's not guarded. All the rest are guarded. The guards on it helped.
Yeah.
But every once in a while, he'll get a nesting or something. Block it off. If it get blocked, if it gets blocked off, I'll get, I'll get a. I'll get water.
In your basement.
Oh, yeah. I've had it before.
I think we need to do something more serious because this is the second.
Where, what's your, where do you?
We're in Washington Street across from the Hastings.
Oh, yeah.
Elphas.
Yeah, they get water.
I wish you had Sam. Geysers, the Hastings.
Oh, Geysers. Oh, oh, yeah, the Geysers are in the.
We're right.
Oh, left or right?
If you look at the Geysers, things were on the left.
Yeah, so it's down a little bit.
It is.
Alright. Um, let me just remind everybody really quickly. These mics are hot. The cameras are live right now, so anything you say, even if you whisper it, they get picked up on the ambient mics. I apologize for being late tonight. Don't like to start meetings late. We had attorney client tonight. Got a couple of matters that just took a little bit more time. So if I can, ask everybody to rise and face the flag for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please take your seats. Alright. Um, if you don't have a copy of the agenda, they are on the back corner of the desk right there. There might be a couple of small adjustments. I'm pretty sure that everybody's aware that, um, it's been about a month today. I'll tell you that from about four thirty this morning, um, in regards to the weather event we just had. This is the third one we've had since December twenty-third of last year, July ninth of this year, and now December seventeenth through December eighteenth. Um, with what we're dealing with, with, um, a lot of, of, a lot of volume of water and rain. So we had about six plus inches of rain today. The school system blessedly shut down, albeit late, but kept, uh, kept the kids off the road today. We had downed trees across the village. We're two point one by two point one square miles. Our folks were out first thing this morning, whether it was the highway department or the water department or our police force and our firefighters making sure that they removed all the debris from the roadways and did their best to keep the catch basins and the storm water that was running off the mountain, um, in copious amounts, um, as clear as possible. Um, I'm happy to report that we had only one resident that almost, and the key phrase there is almost, um, had to be evacuated today um, due to the fact that a boiler was underwater and a basement had shorted everything out and the house was not fit for habitation. But, um, due to some great work from Central Hudson and an electrician that came in and an HVAC professional and our folks, um, the person was able to stay in their home. So nobody got evacuated, unlike July ninth, where we had off the boulevard, off of Payson Road and off of Mountain Road, about eight families that lost their first floor. So thank God for small, small, good things that happen in a, in a tough storm. But we are working to mitigate this as best we can. People want solutions. Obviously, December twenty-third of last year, July ninth of this year, people are expecting us to, to make changes, to fix the culverts, make them bigger, make them, um, capable of handling a, a higher volume of water. We have almost three million dollars worth of asks. Um, and when you make an ask or a request to FEMA, it's not just, hey, we need this. It's spending time, our highway superintendent, our water superintendent, myself, walking with these folks at these different locations and saying, this is what we need. This is what happened from the storm. So we're hoping in the next couple of months, and I know hope is not a plan, but we're hoping that, uh, we get word back from them on being able to make some major remediations. But that doesn't help the people that got crushed by the storm last night. So that's basically, um, Chief Quinn, um, Assistant Chief Trainer, Dave, anything I missed in regards today? Once we get to your reports, I'll have you fill us in more on what you did today, but anything I missed in just kind of the general overview? Alright, good. Alright, appreciate that. Okay, um, that's the storm update. The first thing that we have, and there are two opportunities at village board meetings for public comment, and we don't make you specify whether it's related to an agenda item or not. We allow you to speak at the beginning of the meeting or at the end of the meeting. So this will be the first opportunity for public comment. We ask that you step up to the podium here. You state your name for the record and your residence, and then we give you three minutes to speak. Um, I'm not draconian about it. As long as you're moving the ball forward and there's no pejoratives or, uh, you know, ad hominem's, we allow you to go on a little bit longer, but three minutes is kind of what we'd like to keep it to. Does anybody wish to speak in regards to public comment? Yes, ma'am, Mrs. Gazda. Oh, and I'm sorry, Barbara, before you start, I just want to point out trustee Bill Brain is not here tonight. He just had successful hip surgery and is on the mend. The surgery was yesterday, so he is watching on our YouTube, uh, channel tonight, but will not be in attendance. And I think we've got everybody else here. Alright, I'm sorry, Ms. Gazda, state your name and your address, please.
Um, Barbara Gazda, nineteen homeland. Um, I've read the letter from Sina Hudson about the Savage Wonder Festival, and I wonder if we have the plans that Sina Hudson requested on that event yet.
So to answer your question, I have a rough, rough, with emphasis on rough, copy that, um, I got on Tuesday, and I've talked to Christopher Paul Meyer about it. It's not even in a shape or form yet where I'm comfortable giving it to the board. There's some things that I asked for, and as soon as I get those back, I will share that with the board. But we have a very rough copy of it. They have answered those questions, but there's some follow-on corollary questions that I have of them before I give it to the board.
Yeah, because they asked for an event management plan. They asked for lighting plans. They asked for restoration plans. And I, I kind of think, um, that all of those things are really important. I think they're valid concerns. Um, I was a little disappointed that, that the village board didn't want those plans before you, the board voted on it. Um, I just think that would have been a little pertinent. But I also have something else I want to ask about. Um, transportation. Um, they're, they're going to be doing busing. Where are they going to load and unload passengers? Do you have any ideas to how that's going to happen?
It's going to happen on Bayview, so they will not actually be bringing the buses onto the Donahue Farm property itself.
Okay, well, um, from Bayview to Dock Hill, we have that short road that goes.
That cut through.
On that little, on the downside of that little park. Um, on the Dock Hill, um, side of that, we have a really nice stone arch bridge that goes, you know, over the, the little creek. Um, that's already been, I mean, one side has a crack in it. The other side has been compromised. Um, I would hope that we're not going to be taking school buses over that.
That's not the plan.
Yeah, and, and they won't be school buses. They'll be those short buses that we use for River Fest.
You know, well, they're pretty good sized buses that we use for River Fest.
I don't think that, Barbara, that bridge isn't rated for a school bus.
Yeah.
School bus is thirty thousand.
We wouldn't be doing multiple buses over that strip of road.
The turnaround point, and blessedly, even though we want two eighteen open, but because there's a, there's a part of the road that's completely washed out and it's closed, they will use that turnaround point at the end of Bayview. So the buses will make their drop.
Okay.
Go down there, turn around, and then come back Bayview.
Okay, okay. Um, I just, and I just want to make one other point. Uh, with Sina Hudson, they're really our forever partners at this farm. And I, I hope that that's how we look at it and how that we regard them and how we interact with them.
We, Barbara, we met with Sina Hudson, the, a group of us, and I think you met with them an additional time. They've been apprised and they know everything. We had a meeting, the, all their questions were answered prior to them issuing the letter by, by Chris Meyer and the rest of his staff. So they know everything that we know, they know.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously, there are questions that aren't answered.
Scope, right. We approved the scope, not the plan.
Not the plan.
Yeah. Not the plan yet. We just told them we were amenable to it insofar as they brought us a plan that this village board by majority vote said that will work.
Little bit different than.
Okay, so that's a little bit of clarity because approving the scope and approving the plan, because it's, it's quite clear in this letter from Sina Hudson that they're not approving anything.
Well, they, they don't have to approve anything. They're saying in there, they're saying, they're saying that we're not approving, they're not saying, they're not saying either one.
Mm-hmm.
They're staying neutral.
Right.
This is not subjects, what I'm saying is this is, they're not the arbiter of whether or not this happens.
He's right.
They're not the ones who decided, Barbara.
So they don't have to approve it?
No, they don't have to approve it.
Yeah, they're, they're partnered with us, but to his point, the village board is the authority for approving events on village property.
But as you, but as you correctly pointed out, essentially, they're partners with us, and there are guidelines pursuant to the conservation easements and everything on it. They know that well. Our attorneys know it well. We, Jim and I have read through, the board has read through it. That's why we've had these meetings with them. That's why we're, they're giving us directions, saying, this is the way that they interpret the conservation easement. So does it fit within those things? Yes, it does. Does it not fit within those things? If it doesn't fit with what they determine, that, that paragraph or that, that line in the, in the conservation easement, then they advised in the letter that, okay, we don't, we don't think this fits within there. So then what happens is that Chris Meyer and his staff comes back and says, okay, we'll make these adjustments. So the, the idea here is they're going to come back with this plan. They can come back with the plan if we disagree with it, say, you need to make this adjustment. They make the adjustment. If we don't agree with the entire plan, we don't have to let it go forward. But the bottom line is that they're not the arbiter of deciding whether or not it happens.
Well, in regard to their, uh, conservation easements and, and the covenants that are already in place.
Yeah.
We have to respect those, correct?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That's why they're, that's why they're involved.
And this event has to respect those as well.
Correct.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I, and you and I have spoken about this privately, and I certainly understand and respect, you know, your concerns, and you're speaking for a number of people. You're not, you're not a lone voice in the wilderness. There are other people that share your concerns. This board is committed to ensuring that we work with Sina Hudson. The way that I interpreted the letter, they showed us a roadmap, how to get to yes. Right. They didn't tell us yes. They said, you got to do this, 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 and this, and this is what we believe needs to happen so that this event stays within the conservation easement.
Exactly.
Okay?
Yep. That's.
Alright, and by the way, to your point too, um, they were down on scene today, concerned about the water rushing off the mountain. They were at Mary Donahue's property, spoke to them today. They truly are partners in all of this.
And that little brook was rushing.
Um, it was a little agitated today.
Thank you.
Or in George Costanza's words, the sea was angry that day, my friend. Alright, um, anybody else for public comment? There will be another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Seeing no one, we shall move ahead to the monthly report. I'm sorry, we will not. We will do the two, I'm sorry, three public hearings that we have. I'm sorry, that's, yeah, that's a, that's a resolution. Well, actually, we have two public hearings. Um, alright, so we don't normally get a turnout for these meetings, so I want to thank the members of the Cornwall Yacht Club for coming today because normally it's, I can hear my voice echoing, even though I can still hear it tonight. Um, we had two public hearings scheduled for tonight, and part of this was the good faith effort and negotiation between the yacht club and their, uh, council and the village board and our council on two matters. It started out as one matter, which was the length of road from the bottom of Dock Hill Road, just, just south of the parking area and to the end of Shore Road, and as far as the claim of who owns that road? Does the village own it? Does the yacht club have rights to it? Does CSX have rights to it? And working that out. The second piece was an additional, um, um, view that the village board had in regards to a contract that was codified during the Reagan administration in nineteen eighty-six to lease a piece of a hundred and fifty foot property on the frontage of Donahue Memorial Park for two hundred and fifty dollars a year. Um, so those are two different things. I know the attorneys are trying to work this out. We were doing this in stages and steps, and without going any further into this, um, we were going to have two public hearings tonight in regard to the first piece, who owns Shore Road, who has rights to Shore Road, who controls that stretch of Shore Road. But councillor, I'm going to turn it over to you from here on out.
We should make a motion, open up the public hearing concerning narrowing Shore Road and concerning parking on Shore Road.
Well, actually, we decided to cancel the public hearings. So, so I'll just, I'll be brief. So, yes, the first issue, as the mayor explained, was concerning this, the use of, uh, Shore Road. Uh, of course, particularly in front of the yacht club property. After, we had several meetings, we walked the property, we had a surveyor do a survey, the yacht club and their council and the board and I kind of hit on a proposal as to how to resolve that issue. The two public hearings tonight were, uh, parts of that, uh, resolution, so to speak. One would have determined, uh, the scope, the length and width of Shore Road, uh, for, uh, parking purposes, and the other would have narrowed the existing road to those same dimensions. The idea being it would create parking areas for the yacht club and, on the other hand, still maintain public access. While we have been discussing this, the other issue came up with respect to the lease of the chapel property down at the waterfront. In several discussions I've had with the yacht club's council, uh, council's looking for additional information, our legal position with respect to the lease. There's some foil requests that are being fulfilled. Um, so when we scheduled these public hearings, we thought that we would be able to conclude the issue concerning the road. When the other issue about the yacht club, excuse me, about the chapel property, uh, came about, um, yacht club's council basically said, uh, he and also his client wanted a global disposition. They didn't want to piecemeal it. If we're going to resolve the issue about the road, let's also at the same time resolve the issue concerning the lease. That's where it stands right now. We're still in the, the process. We have to get the yacht club some more information. We'll have some more discussions. Hopefully sometime soon, there'll, there'll be a meeting, a productive meeting, just like the other meetings we had, uh, down at the property. And so I agreed with, uh, their council that until we got closer to having that global disposition, we would simply cancel the public hearings. They'll have to be re-noticed anyway at a, at a future date. We'll have more information, we'll have more clarity, and again, we'll try to do this as a one global disposition. So that's, that's why we decided to cancel them for tonight.
So do we have to do a motion to cancel, or is it, we just?
You can do it. I guess you, I guess, well, I guess it's correct for the board to decide to cancel it rather than me, so, yes, you can make a motion to cancel the public hearings.
Alright, so I'll make the motion to cancel the public hearing to narrow Shore Road, also concerning the parking on Shore Road. Can I get a second?
Second.
Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Um, and I'll also submit this too because, um, you know, as we're going back and forth with council, and I know we try to do things through our litigators, but we are happy as representatives of the village board, myself, anyone else, um, to meet with the yacht club to discuss the piece of property known as the Cornwall Landing, um, where the church property is, um, as we go forward. Um, it's a lot more difficult, as we all know, and trust me, coming from twenty-five years in the Department of Justice, going just back and forth between attorneys, but we'll certainly do that. But if the yacht club, their leadership would like to meet and to discuss that, to see where the village board's head is in regards to what we believe, um, uh, a negotiated settlement going forward would be, something righteous, we can do that. And I know that, you know, your council's positions are different than ours. That's usually the way that works in these kind of negotiations, but we're happy to sit down and talk. I just don't want this to be, to drag on and on and on. I'm a guy that just likes to move things along, so this has been on the agenda here, um, where the public hearings were involved for a while, but this piece with the, uh, lease, I'd love to at least get some initial discussions with us going. We can certainly have council there. I think that's appropriate, so. Anything else from the board in regards to the public hearing that was set or anything else related to the yacht club? Because this will be it on the, well, yeah, so I'll tell you guys, I'm sorry, Joe.
When this is done, then you, the tax cap, public hearing.
Yes, but what I'm saying is we have the Cornwall Yacht Club lease a village property at the DMP update down under other business, but I won't revisit it because I think we've kind of beaten that horse senseless beyond recognition. So if you guys are sticking around just for that, we won't discuss that again unless you'd like to speak at the end of the meeting, and you're certainly entitled to stick around for more Root Canal with no Nova Kane, listening to me talk, so. Alright, so moving on, um, that takes care of that piece, public hearing, um, in regard, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing to, in order to, um, override, to propose a local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C. Can I have a second?
Second.
Um, this is in regards to the fact that the New York State Comptroller has set one point oh two percent as the amount that we are able to in our annual village budget. Our budget on the general side, the general fund side is around four million dollars a year. On the water side, it's about three million dollars a year, so we deal with about seven million dollars worth of taxpayer dollars. Um, and the comptroller this year set a limit of us only being able to bust the budget by one point oh two percent, very slim margin. Um, the board is working hard right now as we're in the budget phase. The board is working on the budget right now of not having to do that, and we think we found some solutions not to have to do that, but it makes sense that we have the flexibility in the event that we need to, and that's what the purpose of this public hearing is. So, um, I'm going to make a motion to open the public hearing on the local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C, which I just did, and open it up to the public for anyone that would like to.
Call the vote.
Oh, call the vote to open the public hearing.
Call the vote, yeah.
Alright, may I have a second? I got that? All in favor? Aye. Four oh, okay. Um, I'm going to open it up now to anybody in the public that would like to speak to that particular issue only. Seeing no one.
Right, and Mr. Mayor, part, part of the reason that the board would be conducting the public hearing, this local law would allow you to exceed the tax cap, but, and I don't know if you mentioned it exactly, the budget as you're proposing, you're hoping to stick within the tax cap. Uh, so that hopefully the, the board needs to adopt this in case the comptroller recalculates, uh, the, the budget or recalculates the tax cap. But I think you indicated earlier that you have no intention of exceeding, or hopefully not exceeding, the, uh, the tax cap.
So, so that is the intention of the village board, not to exceed the tax cap, which, like I said, we can go over it by one point oh two percent with this vote. The current budget as it stands right now that is proposed, and it's the first budget draft that the board is reviewing, and if the board doesn't approve this by February first, which will, will become the budget on March first, um, we are actually zero point one. 1st, which will, will become the budget on March 1st, um, we are actually 0.185% below. So we're, we're in good stead. We don't need to bust that cap, but we're still gonna give ourselves the opportunity if we have to.
Unless there's a flood.
Yeah, yeah, like today. But yeah, we are 0.18 point, we are 0.185% just under the tax cap right now, so, good news. Thank you, Doris, for sharing that with me. All right, so hearing nobody wishing to speak, um, I'm gonna make a motion to close the public hearing. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Four oh vote, okay. Moving on, minutes. Um, I'm gonna make a motion to approve the minutes from the November 20th, 2023 Village Board Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the December 11th, 2023 Village Board Special Meeting. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Is everybody here? I'm not sure.
You were here.
Okay, I know one of us wasn't, right?
Because that was, that was the work session where we passed a resolution, which required it was a, a special meeting. All right, so I have a second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to the treasures report. The open utility balances report for the end of November reads as follows. Village water, sewer, garbage and penalties, $274,126.53. Town water and penalties, $254,041.41, for a grand total of $528,167.94. The monthly revenue expenditure reports by fund, the general fund revenue stands at $4,363,715.51, with expenditures of $3,960,317.97. The water fund revenue stands at $2,664,462.22, with expenditures of $1,898,543.29. And finally, the sewer funds revenue stands at $451,885.70, with expenditures of $42,628.33. For total receipts of $6,682,47.43, or 83.93% in anticipated revenues, and $6,261,489.59, or 76.38% in anticipated expenditures through the end of November. The village tax collection period ended on October 31st. Unpaid taxes totaling $143,204.57 have been turned over to the Orange County Commission of Finance for collection. The balance collected for sewer capital is $559,060.52. Moving on to board department reports. The building department, trustee Carnwright.
Report for November 2023, building permits issued 10, certificate of compliance occupancy issued 1, onsite inspections 29, violations 1, stop work orders 0, municipal searches 4, solar panels 0, fire inspections 1. Manny Carmona, code enforcement officer.
Senor Carmona, anything to add to that report, sir? And I see that you have your young understudy here, is there a...
He's pulling out of the experience of one, believe me.
He, he wanted to sit through the torture that you have to sit through twice a month. So, uh, Jimmy Moore, raise your hand. So Jimmy is our, our newest part-time code enforcement officer. He is also a full-time firefighter in the Arlington District, the Arlington District across the river, but he is a Cornwall and Hudson and Cornwall kid through and through, and we are lucky and blessed to have you. Jimmy, thanks for coming. All right, moving on to the police department. Typically trustee Brain handles this. I'm gonna hand this off to deputy Matt Kane. Would you mind handling?
Sure, okay, the monthly report for November 2023. With respect to felonies, none. With respect to misdemeanor and violations, there was one for fraud, uh, identity theft, one for criminal mischief, one for peddle larceny, one for harassment, aggravated harassment. As for arrests, there were two misdemeanor arrests. With respect to vehicle and traffic, there was one responsive personal injury accident, two property damage accidents, six traffic summons issued, uh, four traffic warnings were issued, two parking summons, there was, summonses were issued, 23 traffic enforcement posts and two speed slash radar, uh, sign postings. With respect to non-criminal activity, six fire response calls, five domestic incident, four alarm response calls, one noise complaint, five suspicious incident calls, eight animal complaints and two disorderly person calls. As for departmental assists, there were three to the town of Cornwall PD, 11 to EMS, one to other agencies, one to other police agencies, one welfare check, two citizen check, and one other, uh, Cornwall and Hut- Hudson Department assist. The chief notes that during the month of November, uh, the police department applied for a grant funding for four new computers, printers and scanners, all four of the police department marked patrol vehicles through the New York State Police Tracks Program. Also during the month of November, the police department applied for approximately 1,300 in grant funding through the Guardian Angel Traffic Safety LED lighting devices. During the month of November, the police department participated in the Orange County Stop DWI Traffic Enforcement Grant Funding. And that's about it.
All right, chief, um, anything to add to the report? All right, um, I just got, uh, yet another, um, text of gratitude from residents that were, in this instance, thanking the police department for showing up, um, and, and being visible and being there for them, and, um, wanted to, to give us a shout out, so thank you for, uh, I know Sergeant Ruger was out there working his butt off this morning, and I know all your officers do, so, so thank you for that. Any questions of the chief before we move on? All right, fire department, uh, trustee Paleotto is gonna handle it for trustee Brain tonight.
Okay. 10 EMS calls, 10 EMS calls, uh, 1 structure fire, uh, 5 automatic alarm, 2 odor smoke, 1 gas leak, 2 MVA, 1 apparatus station maintenance, 2 meetings, 5 drills, total events 29. Uh, pending a 60-day comment period, New York State has established stipends for volunteer firefighters who complete certain New York State certified trainings. Volunteer firefighters who complete basic exterior firefighting operations, interior, uh, firefighting operations and fire officer 1 will be eligible for stipends of $750,1,250 and $1,000 respectively. New York State has enacted enabling legislation allowing the village to implement its own stipend program to provide $500 to volunteer firefighters for completing any other New York State Office of Fire Prevention and Control class, or if it's equivalent. It is expected that 10,000, no, 10 million in new funding from DHES will be announced near the end of December to provide grants for grants up to 1 million for fire departments. The program will give priority departments whose budgets are 250,000 or less. The village's self-contained breathing apparatus are over 20 years old, and 3,000 will be continuing parts, discontinuing parts for our equipment. On November 26th, Captain Tom, Tom Trainer and Lieutenant Charles Quinn led nine of our firefighters at a live burn training with members of the Kosai Bridge Fire District of the Orange County Fire Training Center. It was an opportunity to drill under adverse conditions and to work together with a neighboring department. Respectfully submitted, Charles R. Quinn, Fire Chief.
Chief, anything to add?
Um, our meeting on Thursday, you asked me to play a recording, um, from one of our pagers, so I will do that now.
Can I set that up first, or can you, can you help set that up for the board? Because I have not shared that with them, but we're talking about the, um, the system that notifies our firefighters of an incident.
Yes, and what you're going to hear are recordings of two pages. Um, the first, you'll hear message 1, and then you'll hear the first page. It was a dispatch from the Orange County 911 Center. Um, you'll be able to hear clearly what it is. Then you'll hear message 2, and after message 2, it'll be a dispatch, um, from the town police department.
8100.
8100, um, they're both off the assistant chief's pager. He was about five miles away, um, west of the village. Um, so he was further from the Beacon Tower than he was from, um, the town police department.
The Beacon Tower is the Orange County 911 Center Tower, and the tower the chief is talking about here, that if you call into 8100, it gets transferred out of the tower behind Town Hall. So a closer tower is what he's trying to intimate.
But isn't there a repeater on Snake Hill 2? There's not, we're not on that?
Not, not for dispatching the fire department.
Now, when you say pager, just to clarify, so the general public understands what we're saying here, when you say pager, you're not saying cellphone. You're saying pager.
Pager.
Okay, how many people in the fire department carry pagers? Everyone?
All the active firefighters have a pager.
Okay, just so everybody knows. Okay.
Hopefully this works on the first try.
I know, you don't see many pagers.
7 unread messages. Message 1.
What's the message?
Country, Cornwall Hudson Fire Department responding, medical call to Lafayette Street, crosses Hudson Street and Taylor Place, a 70-year-old male sinkable episode. Being for the Cornwall Hudson Fire Department, a medical call to Lafayette Street, crosses Hudson Street and Taylor Place, 70-year-old male sinkable episode, 9:53.
Message 2, unread.
So you could barely hear the voice underneath that, and then it just cuts out because the signal was too weak to keep the, uh, the channel open. It's, it's a problem that we experience when the town dispatches us. It's not the employees, it's the equipment, the antenna. Um, sometimes it triggers our siren at the firehouse, sometimes it does not, um, and depending upon where you are in the village, you'll either get a clear message, um, or, or you won't.
So, so think about that. So the call goes into the Orange County 911 Center, the call goes from Goshen, New York, to Beacon, New York, across the river, and then hits a pager here in Cornwall Hudson, versus the second call that obviously nobody could hear because it was all broken up and choppy and staticky, which goes, the phone called 8100, which is where, you know, Town Hall is, off of the tower there, onto the pagers in the village of Cornwall Hudson. With the chief, and chief, correct me if I'm wrong, the chief is asking if we are all right, as a board, with having them get dispatched only from the 911 Center. So we would tell, we would tell Town Hall, 8100, that calls that come in for fire response in the village of Cornwall Hudson will be dispatched from Goshen. Chief, did I get that right?
Yes.
I am 100% behind it. If anybody has any arguments or disagreements, speak now.
But chief, well, I have no problem with this. So if someone does call there, what, it'll automatically bounce over to Goshen? Is that what's gonna happen?
They would have to forward it.
They'll, I, they will forward it. Okay, gotcha.
Yeah, that, that's what happens now at night automatically. Um, they're, they're only on for the A shift, and at night it goes to Goshen automatically.
Understood, okay.
Any issues from any of the trustees?
Wants whatever's best.
All right, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
Um, and thank you also, chief, this morning, um, between you and assistant chief Trainer, I saw Lieutenant Quinn out, I saw Captain Trainer, um, I saw firefighter, um, Lindenberger, and I'm sure there were a whole host of others that I didn't see, but they were out pumping basements, they were out checking on gas smells, they were out dealing with oil spills, they were doing all the things. And they don't make one penny from this village, so thank you. All right, any other questions for the chief on fire company? Nope? All right, moving on to public works department, staying with trustee Paleotto.
Uh, trash collected for the month, um, 140.83 tons. Recycling collected for the month, 26.25 tons. Yard weight collected, waste collected for the month, 140 yards. Mowing and trimming of village-owned properties, preparation of winter equipment, sweeping of streets, repairs and maintenance of village-owned vehicles, blacktop patching, paving of riverfront parking lots and the museum parking lot, roadside leaf cleanup. Continuing with FEMA paperwork for recovery, we lined parking spots at the riverfront. Notes, we have one salt spreader that is out of service awaiting parts. Dave Halverson, superintendent of public works.
Davey, anything to add? I mean, you guys were just slightly busy today, I know, but, uh, anything to add?
It was a nice, warm December morning. Jim, is our paperwork for recovery finished? It is, right?
For FEMA?
Yeah.
Yes, everything's been submitted on the water side and the highway side.
Just, just for the general public, um, where it says continuing with FEMA paperwork for recovery, our paperwork for recovery is submitted.
There is ongoing...
Things that happen all the time, yeah.
Uh, we have one tomorrow.
But we have the first batch in.
Yes.
So don't hold your...
We've submitted all the documents that we can submit, but it just...
Keeps going. It's...
Lot of people wondering.
Yeah. So, um, so this morning, um, first thing this morning, I guess around 4:45, I got my first reach out, which, which is understandable, and, um, kinda live for the crisis management moments. It's been a while since I've been in the game like that on the law enforcement side, but from somebody requesting help with filling sandbags, um, you know, to divert water with their property. Residents call on a whole host of things. A resident actually called, um, the town clerk's office and the town supervisor's office and said their power had gone out, and could somebody from the town come over and reinstall their power. Residents call about everything, and we handle, literally no one calls here, emails, texts, um, calls a cellphone, without somebody being dispatched to go up there and, and see what their needs are. And as I pointed out today, um, we're blessed that nobody was displaced, um, but I also wanna make sure that people understand what the role the highway department is. Um, first and foremost, it's, it's public safety issues. When a tree comes down, which several came down in the village, one in particular on the boulevard that blocked the entire boulevard, our guys have to go out there and remove them. Anytime one goes down on a wire, like happened up on Deer Hill Road this morning, Central Hudson comes in, everything gets shut down, our guys have to be there to assist with it. When it's our village properties and, um, basements are flooding, things like that, our guys have to go out there with an excavator, divert water, pump out basements and those kind of things. But I tried to explain to residents, we have an eight-man crew out there working, and again, they do an amazing job. But first and foremost, it's public safety, clearing the roads, and then maintaining the stormwater drains. Because people say, well, what are your priorities? What are you doing? Well, we're, those are the two major things, keeping roads clear and passable, and making sure that the storm drains, because everything runs downhill off the mountain and it has to go somewhere, um, are their two priorities. And they did a great job with that today. Anything to add to that, Dave?
Emergency vehicle traffic is first and foremost for us, uh, in any event, whether it's the rain and wind like that, or a snowstorm as well. I think any of the chiefs will attest to that, when, uh, we, we monitor constantly their calls, and we try to make sure that we're out ahead of them.
Yeah.
But, uh, today was, uh, trees down this morning, all over the place, like you said, Boulevard, Pace and Road, or Duncan Avenue, Shore Road, Mountain Road, had telephone pole on Mountain Road come down.
Yeah. And just because of the level of the Hudson River, if you noticed, our boat slipped down there, our dock area, the water was all the way up to the parking lot because it had come up so high. And on Shore Road, there were two places, one between Dock Hill Road and Wood, that was completely washed out. I have a Jeep, which sits up with a really high chassis, and it was tough going through there. And then another one down by the sewer plant, I was talking to the town supervisor, blessedly the sewer plant is their responsibility, but that property was underwater as well. So our folks were all maintaining that and trying to get things back to normal.
Uh, Shore, Shore Road, those two locations were still closed. I'll check them before I go home tonight. I might open them up, depending if it opened up enough, but...
Okay.
That's first and foremost, is, uh, public safety, obviously.
Any other questions for the DPW superintendent? All right then, uh, moving on, water department and trustee Carnwright.
Okay, water department, November 2023, monthly report. Monthly production, 18,60,000 gallons. Daily average, 603,000 gallons. Samples, collected 48 samples in accordance, um, with our approval water quality monitoring plan. Plans have been submitted under Orange County Department of Health for approval to install new electric actuator valve, SCADA controls, 450 feet of 16-inch water main at the Blackrock Water Treatment Plant at a cost of $3,000. at a cost of three hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars to be funded by FEMA. Transmission and distribution, fifty-one utility markouts were completed, fire flow test on Mailer Avenue, Mill Street, Maple Street, fixed curb stops on Schofield Lane and three oh five Hudson Street, water shut off at property owner's request, fourteen Oak, three oh five Hudson, two Jaeger, water main leaks repaired, Stillman Avenue, Shore Road, River Avenue, placed uh, snow stakes on fire hydrants. Plans have been submitted to Orange County Department of Health for review or approval uh, to replace the Main Street water main in twenty-twenty-four. Estimated cost, one point three million. Meters, red meter, uh, commercial meters, red town meters, red village meters. Eight final water meaning, uh, meter readings were completed. Forty residential water meters were replaced on a water replacement program. Ten water line inspections were completed, and fifteen miscellaneous repairs were completed. Property maintenance, uh, repaired furnace vent and roof at Maple uh, Road Pump Station. Continuing education, Rich Smith and Jason Sargent, uh, attended continuing education training presented by the Hudson Valley Water Works Conference. Other, completed the annual Department of Health inspection, continued the inspection of Stone Hollow Development Water System Repair. Work is ongoing. Uh, shut off water to the village bandstand and town traffic circle irrigation systems. Respectfully, Michael P. Trainer, Water Superintendent.
Um, Mike, thanks too, because your guys today, when uh, we have a weather event like today, it doesn't matter if you're DPW, you're a cop, you're a firefighter, you're a water department, everybody pitches in, and um, your guys worked hard today with Dave guys, and I appreciate that. Um, and I also want to thank Superintendent Trainer for, you know, knocking down erroneous information on social media is gonna, I'm gonna have to hire somebody to be our full-time person that just handles that. But uh, Mike did a good job helping me get the message out to folks that were panicked in regards to our project to replace water meters. And um, it's a very limited amount of residents, you know, we don't just deliver water for the village, we also deliver water to the town. Um, we don't just deliver to residents, we also deliver to businesses. Um, and Mike got a good message out there. Mike, where are we now in the percentile of how many meters that had to be replaced have been replaced?
Um, we're probably at about ninety-one percent have been replaced, and outstanding system-wide is probably about two and a half percent.
Outstanding. And these new meters will help residents because you're not gonna get overcharged for water. They're much more sensitive, and they actually read the amount of water that you use or consume, um, in a much more, um, efficient and effective manner. And it saves us having to send people out to your house to read the meter. So that actually helps us do other things, um, in regards to dealing with our fifty-two miles of outdated pipes that uh, we have to maintain, and our wellfields, and our uh, and our, and our five reservoirs. So I thank the public for understanding, um, and calling us if they know that they have one of the outdated meters. We will replace it at zero cost to the consumer, so it's a no-brainer. Michael, anything else to add to the report?
Just to trustee Carnwright's point about FEMA, um, that one project that FEMA's funding us is, is from September of two thousand twenty-one. So it does take two and a half, three years to get, get everything submitted and get approvals.
And, and that's the hard thing, because, you know, a big part of the job today was standing out there to residents whose, you know, yards were washed away or basements were washed away, saying, but look what happened July ninth, you're supposed to be getting FEMA money, why isn't this repaired? And just understanding the glacial pace that government works to get the funding here to do it. We're talking about to do this right, tens of millions of dollars up on the mountain to redirect water, because everybody at the top of the mountain wants it off their property, but where does the water go? It has to go downstream, and there's people down there that don't want the water ending up on their property. So we are working, we're making sure we're getting everything in on time, and as soon as we receive notice that we'll have that money, we will start the bidding process for work the next day. All right, um, that's that. Moving on to New Windsor and Cornwall EMS and um, the Emergency Medical Service, Deputy Mayor Kane.
Okay, report for November twenty-twenty-three. So with respect to personnel, there are three new volunteers, one new part-time paramedic, one new part-time EMT. There are no injuries to staff members, the annual mandatory training has started, which included sexual harassment. As for operational, there were four hundred and twenty-six total dispatches, one hundred percent of the calls were covered. Two hundred and eighty-five patients were transported. The, the chief notes that there are over four thousand six hundred and fifty calls for the year, and are on track for fifty-one hundred calls. There were two hundred and thirty-seven new uh, calls to New Windsor, seventy-four to Cornwall, and there's six hundred and twenty-six year-to-date in Cornwall. Eleven Village of Cornwall, and there's a hundred and twenty-five year-to-date in Cornwall, in the village. Um, there were eighty-two mutual aid ALS standbys, provided times to various locations or private transports and non-emergency transport for residents. The average response time, so for New Windsor was seven minutes, for Cornwall was five minutes twenty-five seconds, and for Cornwall and Hudson, it was five minutes fifty-one seconds. The Cornwall unit covered sixteen calls in New Windsor, New Windsor covered seven calls in Cornwall and the village. The, a new ambulance for the new, for New Windsor arrived, and then should be in service this month. The next new ambulance for New Windsor arrives in the fall of twenty-twenty-four. The New York State Department of Health recertification, um, is completed uh, with respect to administrative and others. Um, the Cornwall Community Board member is no longer able to remain as a board member, as she is now the town of Cornwall, she's now on the town of uh, Cornwall Board. And so we also need a list of residents to consider filling this position by January first. Um, the twenty-twenty-four schedule of fees has been submitted. Cameras were installed in the Cornwall station. Chief notes that the Cornwall entry door is still broken, making entry a challenge at times. Lastly, the annual billing company meeting was, has been completed, and notes were sent to the uh, the board, and that's it.
Um, so Chief Big is not here, but um, I speak to him quite frequently. And again, one of the things that I am most proud of, the village board and the town council, um, going in together on, was brokering a agreement for ALS and BLS services with New Windsor EMS and the creation of Cornwall EMS. The fact that they have now been servicing us on both ends, BLS and ALS, since July of two thousand and twenty-two, and in that entire time, they have not missed one call. Makes them the gold standard. And um, I won't belabor this, but this morning, if you read the Mid Hudson News, um, big headline, Middletown to spend seven hundred thousand dollars for new ambulance service. Now that Empress Ambulance has purchased mobile life support services, it is going to cost the city of Middletown. Now granted, Cornwall and Cornwall and Hudson are about sixteen thousand residents. The city of Middletown is around three hundred, I'm sorry, thirty thousand five hundred residents, so just over thirty thousand, so about twice our size, for seven hundred thousand dollars for dedicated service only for next year. Mayor Joe DiStefano said it appears that the cities of Newburgh and Poughkeepsie may ultimately be charged even more and doing the same. Quote, "If the county and state leaders don't see that there is a crisis in the ambulance service in this state, this will hopefully wake them up," close quote, DiStefano said. Quote, "The burden is on us now. We have to make sure we maintain the minimum of service. In this case, we will probably be getting quicker service, because these two units will now be dedicated within the city of Middletown, once we go to a multi-year contract," close quote. Following the first-year contract, DiStefano said, the city would probably shift to a three-year agreement. It's what this board and the town council did, um, just about two years ago. And um, I think it has been one of the biggest successes in recognizing that we are going to have to adjust how we do ambulance service, um, in this region. The, the notion of just having your own hometown ambulance service handle things, um, without it being integrated with your fire departments, and without there being some type of regional support. New Windsor EMS is our regional support here. And when I go up to the NICOM conference, the New York Conference of Mayors every April, um, I repeatedly hear how much New Windsor EMS is the gold standard discussed around the state. And really, it's a, it's a, it's a credit to them, and we're blessed that we're in that spot right now. We're coming up on the end of our three-year deal, and we'll have to renegotiate another one, and the town supervisor myself will be involved in that with our boards very shortly. Okay, any other questions, um, on EMS? Nope, hearing none? Let's move to the resolutions. All right. First item of business is to accept with regrets, um, the resignation of a police officer. So I'm gonna make a motion to accept the resignation of Police Officer Daniel LaBoden, effective December twenty-sixth of this year, two thousand and twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Um, and I'll give you the further discussion. We're gonna hire him back as a part-time police officer. So he's gonna be retiring and then coming back part-time to us. So, any further discussion on the matter for his resignation with regret? Then. All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, I know. All right, aye, four ayes. All right, let me go ahead now, um, and chief, we're doing the, we're doing the resolution to rehire him tonight? Okay, so I'm gonna make a motion to appoint, um, Officer Daniel LaBoden, effective four days later, December thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-three, to the Village of Cornwall Hudson Police Department in a part-time capacity in accordance with the current PBA contract. May I have a second? Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Um, toward, the next item is a resolution to award the Main Street Bridge Water Main Replacement Project to uh, TAM Enterprises. Michael, anything you want to give in a lead-up on this? I mean, I think we've talked about it quite frequently, but just kind of give a quick dump on what we're doing?
Yeah, so this work's gonna be done in conjunction with the Orange County DPW work to replace the bridge on Main Street. Uh, we tend to look at whatever projects are being done locally so that we can partner with them and, and hopefully save some costs to our, our customers. And we received, I believe, four bids on this with TAM being the lowest.
Is it going under or?
It's gonna go on the bridge.
Yeah.
It's coming out of the stream that's next to uh, the Canterbury Brook Inn, and we're having a lot of problems with water mains in the streams, because with these heavy rainstorms, it's eroding the stream bed, exposing the water mains, and they're being damaged.
How big is it, man?
That's the original ten-inch water main from eighteen ninety-five.
Which is, um, uh, cast iron, correct?
Cast iron, yes.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna make a motion to accept the Main Street Bridge Water Main Replacement Project bid from TAM Enterprises Incorporated. That's TAM, T-A-M Enterprises Incorporated. TAM was the lowest responsible bidder. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion or questions for the superintendent? Michael, amount?
Two thirty-five, nine seventy.
Is that correct? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item is to set the public hearing date and time for the budget. Um, so I'd like to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Um, I'll read it since it's short. Whereas in accordance with New York State law, I'm sorry, in accordance with New York State Village Law, Section five dash five oh eight subsection three, the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson wishes to set a time and place for a public hearing to obtain input and to consider the proposed budget for the village's twenty-twenty-four fiscal year. For the general public, our fiscal year is not like the federal government fiscal year, which runs from October first to September thirtieth. Our fiscal year runs from March first to February twenty-eighth, or in the case of this year, February twenty-ninth. Um, so the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson wishes to set a time and place for the public hearing to attain input and to consider the proposed budget. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that a special meeting be scheduled by the village board for the purpose of conducting a public hearing in order to receive public comment regarding the village budget on January eighth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven oh one PM in the Village Hall Boardroom, which is the Edward C. Moulton Junior Boardroom, which you are currently seated in, and any other business that may come before the board. And it is further resolved that the village clerk is hereby authorized and directed to cause public notice of said hearing to be given as provided by law. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on setting the public hearing for the budget? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, Fire Commissioner, I'm sorry, what did I miss? Oh, where'd I miss that? Okay, ah, that's right, okay. Um, so as everyone knows, um, former, I should say retired village clerk Gene Mahoney, who worked for the village for twenty-nine years, has come back and is working in a part-time capacity to help us through the budget season, uh, after the departure of our part-time village treasurer. And so now the village is seeking to hire a part-time treasurer. So I'd like to make a motion authorizing village clerk Doris Wickizer to post for a part-time treasurer to work on a part-time basis at a fee to be set at a future date. May I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion from the board?
How many hours?
Um, it would be twenty hours per week, correct Doris? More or less?
Yeah.
Twenty hours per week, thank you. Okay, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next item of business then is the Fire Commissioner appointment. Okay, we have a board of fire commissioners, um, that basically sits over Storm King Engine Two. Um, and, I know, I always get that wrong, all right, the fire department. Um, and it is made up of three commissioners. Um, we had one commissioner that just recently retired from the village board, that was trustee Rich Gaylord. Um, there are two commissioners currently serving. Um, the chair, um, is Rick Giampolo, who's seated directly to my front here, um, and retired chief Jeff Armitage, so there's one vacancy. Um, we canvassed, um, we did it through all the old usual places, village Facebook page, social media, the village website, um, posted it far and wide, word of mouth and everything. We had three candidates. Of those three candidates, the village board took a look at all three, um, and made the selection of Mr. Michael Butkus, B-U-T-K-U-S, who is a professor, um, at the United States Military Academy and lives at Thirty-One River Avenue, um, and has a wealth, and I say going back twenty-five, thirty years, of firematic and fire administration, um, experiences. And this morning, in the midst of all the flooding and Noah's Ark being built down at the Donahue Farm property, um, I had an opportunity to meet with him and shared my take with the board, and they are in support of appointing him as our third fire commissioner. I have spoken to one of the two other applicants. We had three exceedingly qualified applicants. Um, I left a message for the third. I always believe that they should hear it directly from me. Um, and I will close that loop tomorrow to make sure that I have a conversation with the third applicant. They were all deserving volunteers who wanted to give back to the community. So without further ado, I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Mr. Michael Butkus as our third fire commissioner. Joe, what's the wording? To serve out the duration of the term that was to be expired by trustee Gaylord?
Correct. Commissioner Gaylord in this case.
Commissioner.
Commissioner Gaylord. Um, may I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, welcome aboard, Commissioner Butkus. Okay, um, next item of business is a local, oh no, we already did that, right?
This is to adopt, you have to adopt.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, I'm sorry. Okay, um, local law to override the tax levy, levy limit established in general municipal law subsection, I'm sorry, section three dash C. Um, the tax base, the tax base growth factor, that's quote, tax base growth factor for the village of Cornwall and Hudson in twenty-twenty-four is one point zero two zero zero percent. The proposed levy increase with the two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five fiscal year draft budget is zero point one eight five percent, slightly just under the tax cap, if the village board elects to approve the budget that is being proposed. So I'd like to introduce the following resolution and move for its adoption. Um, Joe, how can I do this without reading this entire thing that? Do I need to read the entire thing? Your call.
Read it, it's, read it, it's not that long, you're just gonna adopt, you don't have to read the whole law.
Right, all right, I'm getting tired of hearing the sound of my own voice. All right, um, whereas, whereas the resolution, all right, Dave, was duly adopted by the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson on November twentieth, twenty-twenty-three, designated the board as lead agency in scheduling a public hearing to be held by said governing body on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven oh one PM at Village Hall to hear all interested persons on a proposed local law entitled a, quote, "local law to override the tax levy limit established in general municipal law, section three dash C, within the village of Cornwall and Hudson," close quote. And whereas notice of said public hearing was duly advertised in the official newspaper of said village, according to law, and whereas said public hearing was duly held on December eighteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at about seven oh one PM at the Village Hall, and all parties in attendance were permitted an opportunity to speak on behalf of or in opposition to said proposed local law or any part thereof. And whereas the board of trustees is the lead agency with respect to the consideration, review, and determination of the significance of the aforementioned legislative action pursuant to the State Environmental Quality Review Act or SEAKER in Part six one seven, and whereas the village board of the Village of Cornwall and Hudson, after due deliberation, finds it in the best interest of said village to adopt said local law. Now therefore, it is hereby resolved that the adoption of- is hereby resolved that the adoption of said proposed local law is an unlisted action under SEAKER, and be it further resolved that the village board finds that the proposed local law has no significance, adverse environmental impacts, and issues a negative declaration thereon, and that the adoption of the proposed local law is in the best interest of the residents of the village, and be it further resolved that the village board of the village of Cornwall and Hudson hereby adopts said local law number two of two thousand and twenty-three of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, a copy which is attached hereto and made a part of this resolution, resolution, and be it further resolved the village clerk be, and she hereby is directed to enter said local law into the minutes of this meeting and in the local law book of the village of Cornwall and Hudson, and to give due notice of the adoption of said local law of the Secretary of the State of New York. May I have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, annual supply bids, uh, the village clerk, uh, Doris Wickizer has reported that a bid opening was held in the village office on November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three for water treatment chemicals. Bids were received from Surp-, Surpass Chemical Corporation, Main Pool, M-A-I-N Pool, and Chemical Incorporated, and Slack Chemical Company Incorporated. I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Surpass Chemical Company Incorporated as the low bidder in the amounts received November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. And for off-road diesel, a sole bid was received from Mirabito, M-I-R-A-B-I-T-O Energy Products. So I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Mirabito Energy Products, the sole bidder in the amounts received November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And next, alum or alum, A-L-U-M Sludge Removal Services, bid received from Tam Enterprises and Wind River Environmental. So I'd like to make a motion to award the bid to Tam Enterprises, T-A-M Enterprises Incorporated, the lowest bidder as per the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-three bid. May I have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye. All right, that takes care of our resolutions for tonight. Moving rapidly towards other business, um, think I really kinda discussed the budget? The board has to approve the budget by February, February one, or the current draft budget, the first iteration of it, becomes the village budget on March first. So we will be working with due diligence in the month of January to make that happen. Doris, let's plan on all of the superintendents meeting with me at the, since we had to cancel the meeting this morning due to the weather, um, let's plan on meeting to discuss their budgets on Monday morning, all right? Either as part of the department head meeting with the mayor or directly following. Is that fair? Okay, unless anybody has, uh, wants to get with me this week because there's something, there's an item in there that they're concerned that I might have a problem with. All right, okay, all right, moving on. IMA to provide water to the town of Cornwall, I'm just, just a placeholder, giving everybody a status report on this. Um, Judge McKay, we do have that now in counselor's hand for the town yet, or have we not released it yet to, uh, Mr. Gabba?
We have not.
Okay.
And I think maybe that was, now that you say that, you, you have approved it, right?
I have approved it. The village board has nothing to add, the only, uh, the only additions or clarifications were given by the water superintendent.
They were incorporated, so I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay, so for the public to understand, um, we do not have a water IMA with the town. We've been delivering water since eighteen eighty-five, um, a hundred and thirty-nine years, um, and we do not have an intermunicipal agreement with the town. This is literally a two-page document that just basically says the village of Cornwall and Hudson has agreed to deliver water to the town. It doesn't specify what water rates are or get into the nitty-gritty, but we've gotta do this because we have not been able to get some, um, we have not had, been able to avail ourselves of some opportunities for grant monies because we don't have a big enough, um, a big enough municipality. So you take three thousand plus thirteen thousand, gives you sixteen thousand, puts us in a different category for grant applications, and it's just right that we have an IMA with them, and we're gonna do it. Did I miss anything, Joe?
Nope.
Okay, next thing, EV charging stations, I'm not gonna steal trustee Brain's thunder on that, he is working on that for us. Our plans are to install a station here in the municipal parking lot, one at the municipal parking lot behind the bandstand, and one or two down at the waterfront. We're not sure yet as far as where the locations would be, but for folks that have, um, electric vehicles or hybrids, you have opportunity to use a swipe card, a credit card, and it's a high-speed charger, you can hook your vehicle up to it while you're wandering down on the, you know, on the plain down there, on the green space, or sitting in your car, and you can have it charged as well as up here too. Okay, um, Cornwall Yacht Club, I said, I'm, I'm good on that, I don't think there was anything that we missed, board?
We're good.
Okay, uh, moving on, proposed franchise agreements with Verizon and Spectrum, um, and the addendum. So the village has been trying to seek a clause in the Spectrum and Verizon, um, agreement that we have to sign with them, that when they put up new wires, they clean up the old ones. So all the zombie pole wires, um, they clean them up, and our attorneys, um, Dave Decker and, and Joe McKay are working on that. I know the town is looking to do something similar, and I think they're just working out the language, the verbiage, Joe?
Yeah, so I know they're, they're grouped together. We've had a lot of dealings with Spectrum on this issue, and we, yeah, we're, we're kind of negotiating, we're, we're down to the finer details, so to speak, with Spectrum. Of course, you know, our position is that the village wants Spectrum to come through and clean up all the extraneous wires. Spectrum's position is, well, you tell us what wires you want us to remove and we'll remove them. It's, it's, I, I wouldn't say impasse at this point, but it's some, something that we do need to clarify and get over. And I think once we do that, because, because we have been negotiating with Spectrum for a while, as I suggested, I would just like to have, you know, a meeting, make sure that all of the village's, the board members' comments are included because the, because this has been going on for a while. So in order to really, you know, finalize it, just a meeting, make sure everything's included, make sure everybody understands, and then we can go ahead and start finalizing that with Spectrum, uh, which would call for a public hearing and things like that.
What do you need from the village board, you, when you say village board comments?
Well, let me, w- we've incorporated the comments from the board. And more specifically, I know Deputy Mayor Kane had, had gone through the agreement in a lot of detail. So before we finalize it, if we could just, you know, make sure we're on the same page.
Have and have us just take a look at it.
Well, really with Deputy Mayor, w- w- once we know that everything's incorporated and his comments and questions are resolved, I think we're, we'll be set to go.
I'm good with that, okay. All right, thank you.
And then, and then we really have to find out what Verizon's doing because they really have not been as responsive.
It's just when they say things like, well, they just need to tell us where they are. People call all the time, and if you go up on Mountain Road or you go down Hudson Street and you see these zombie wires there, so just saying, I'm not accusing you, but just saying to us, well, just call and tell us, it doesn't work that way. And if we don't have it in a binding agreement, you know, and this is the only leverage we have, once we sign this, it's like, there's our leverage, so. Okay, all right, moving on, Mountain Road remediation, I think we talked about that. The road really didn't take as, Dave, as bad of a beating as it took on July ninth or on last December twenty-third, and I, I think we're actually in better shape there than we could have been.
It wasn't as bad today as it was July.
Yeah, yeah. July ninth was eight inches in three hours, hyper-localized. Today was about ten hours, six inches, um, still hyper-localized, but yeah.
It doesn't work if we did work.
Helped, yeah, yeah, okay.
What about the culvert, you wanna talk about that?
Y- yeah, I mean, you know, one of the, Dave, the double-barrel culvert, that was a, that was a fad, that, I say fad, but that was like state-of-the-art in the nineties, correct? We put those in in the nineties, the double-barrel. Let's talk about the one, say, where Payson runs into the Boulevard, that's a double-barrel there.
Yeah, they were, they were put in, I, I don't remember the year, I guess.
Okay, sometime in the nineties. So the problem with the double-barrel is that they're, obviously, it's a double-barrel and they're ribbed, and so, and they're not, they're not big enough, and obviously the, the purpose is you don't want kids going into it, this, that, and the other, but with the ribbing, the debris gets lodged and caught in there, and then it becomes a nightmare and it backs up. So the new, and I don't wanna say state-of-the-art, they've been around for a while, but the, the, the box culverts are what, what we're putting in now. And so on Mountain Road, there's a number of areas where when water's coming off the mountain, the volume of it has to be winnowed down into this tiny little bitty funnel to get to these, these, these double-barrel culverts. So that's part of the FEMA process, that's part of what we're gonna be looking at doing on Mountain Road, um, where the trailhead is, so about halfway up the one-point-eight-mile stretch, as you go up where the trailhead is, there's one there, um.
Still being produced, right?
What, what's still being produced?
The one box culvert.
The one's already in design.
Yeah.
Designed, but it's not built.
It's not built, it's not built yet, no.
Yeah, but that's what we wanna move to, and we probably need to do the same thing on Boulevard, and there's probably a couple of other ones on Mountain Road. I noticed that up towards the top, um, wh- where the family, you don't have to give the names, but you know where the houses are really close to Mountain Road there? Where they have the, the, was it gravy and baskets or gabion baskets or whatever? It looks like the water did not make it to their front, it got right up to the steps on the front there, but did not.
We had, we had, uh, some large logs come down again from, uh, somebody doing tree work and got wedged underneath the, uh, sidewalk in the driveway again up there.
Yeah.
We were up there this morning in waste high water pulling them out.
Yeah. Okay, all right, moving on to, um, for your information, so here's just a list of things that are going on. Um, zoning board meeting is scheduled for, I think those are on Tuesday night, Doris? December fourteenth?
Yes.
Tuesday, December fourteenth at seven PM, it'll be right here, um, in this boardroom.
Over, it's over.
I'm sorry, I'm. That's all right, that's all right, all right, I can go, I can cut through those three. All right, the next planning board meeting is December nineteenth at seven PM, December nineteenth is.
Nope.
Moral?
No, that's, there, there's nothing on the agenda. There would, there's nothing, so that.
The things I learned at the dais. All right, so there is no planning board meeting tomorrow, apparently there's nothing on the agenda. So we can move on down to Christmas. The village offices will be to close December twenty-second, which is next Friday, and December twenty-fifth, which is the following Monday. And I must remind you again that if your garbage gets picked up on a Friday, they will not pick it up that day, you're only gonna get garbage pickup once that week, and if your garbage gets picked up on Monday, they're not gonna pick it up on Monday, so you're only gonna get one garbage pickup that week as well. Wednesday recycling should not be impacted. Dave, what are the days we do recycling?
Wednesday.
Only Wednesdays, right? So then recycling will not be affected, and that also goes to the fine week for New Year's, we're closed on Friday, December twenty-ninth, we're closed on Monday, January first, and the same thing in regards to garbage pickup. December twenty-third, the fire department, Chief, I got it right that time, the fire department will be bringing Saint Nick around on the fire truck around the village. So, um, when you hear the sirens and the Christmas music, and Chief, what are we doing? We're doing some charity thing too, is it, is it collecting food?
Yeah, we're, we're collecting food, it's a food drive for the food bank.
For the food bank.
Um, people could either bring it out to Santa, or there'll be people at the firehouse during the day to, to collect it.
Excellent, okay.
Is that the beer it is for?
We were gonna ask you.
Um, so on, on Saturday, on Saturday, the Cornwall Youth Committee had the final piece of Winter Fest, which I feel like has been going on since August, because we had so many, from June until now, I think we had rain almost every weekend with the exception of three weekends, so we had to do a, between the tree lightings and everything, we had to move some things around, but they did the kids event, um, in town, the town shut down Main Street between, um, not as far as Willow, but somewhere further up and, and to, just inside a Chedane Circle, and it was very well attended by kids, very well done. This week, we're doing children's book readings in the Santa Chair, um, I believe it starts on Wednesday, I am slated to read on Thursday, 'Twas the Night Before Christmas, and followed up by 'Twas the Night Before Hanukkah. So if you have children that wanna be tortured by my voice like these poor people up here are tortured by it, bring them by at four thirty, um, I think we're doing that Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, so if you see a gaggle of children and a gathering there, that's what it's in regards to. Um, January twenty-fifth, I love these joint meetings, I just do, it makes me excited. Um, we are hosting the town council here in the Edward C. Moulton Junior, uh, boardroom at seven PM for our next water committee meeting, and this will be a robust conversation in regards to water rates, um, what we charge the town residents versus village residents, whether or not we would consider selling water to, um, another municipality, these matters will all be on the table. I know hope is not a plan, but I'm hoping that the IMA will be signed and blessed off by them, or at least in the final stages of negotiation, but we will have a briefing by the water committee that Mike, uh, Trainer has chaired, Jim Kane is on, Councilman, uh, McCarty's on, Carla, um, um, Castillo is on, as well as Eric Danega, and they will report out on what their views are on water rates, um, and water sales. We have a lot of repairs to make to our water system, and we've gotta figure out how we're gonna pay for it. So we're gonna talk about those, those exciting issues. So you can either join us, because it's always fun when you get the council and the board together at the same time, and Josh and I agree that we should do it at least quarterly, um, because we're gonna have one in March on the sewer system. So these will be open to the public, and if you cannot attend in person or you don't wanna attend in purpose, person, we will livestream it. The one in January will be here at Village Hall, sponsored by the village, if we do one in March or April, but that'll be on Josh's end, we'll do it from Town Hall. Um, the next special meeting is slated for March twenty-eighth, that is a Thursday, just like January twenty-fifth is a Thursday, and it is special meeting open to the public for a briefing from a gentleman by the name of Mike Wilbur, who conducted an exhaustive, let me get, make sure I get this right, fire apparatus fleet review and assessment of SKE-two's equipment, and is going to come brief the board. We have a paper copy of it. It is quite voluminous, full of pictures and full of diagrams and all the things, but he is going to brief this out to the board, and that night, while we're there only for the fire company, the fire department, um, will also deal with any other fire issues that come before the board at that time. That's a special meeting, Thursday, six o'clock, March twenty-eighth, and I will publicize it as we get closer. And lastly, the village election. Doris, what day is the village election? It is March, do you know off the top of your head? Do we know? It is the first Tuesday.
The thirteenth?
Let me, let me look, I don't wanna give out bad information, somebody will say, I tried to tell, I tried to fool them so they couldn't come vote. It is when?
March nineteenth, we think.
Nineteenth, all right, let me, let me not go on record as saying that that is, I will confirm and get back to you, we know that it is a Tuesday in March, but I will get back to you.
Eleven or nineteen?
We've already set the date, I know that, the board already voted on the date, but.
It's eleven or nineteen.
Yeah, okay, well, it's either the eleventh or the eighteenth is what you're saying, right?
It's a Tuesday.
Yeah, it's a Tuesday. Oh, that's a Monday, so it's the twelfth or the nineteenth.
Twelfth or nineteenth, I'm sorry.
Gotcha, okay, all right, and you're gonna announce, right? When you get to. All right, so without further ado, I think that is all the FYI stuff. Um, I'm gonna start with me tonight instead of closing and just say, I wanna thank our superintendents, all of our. Yeah, I should do that before board comments, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm beat up right now. All right, I just got reminded, I forgot about the second public comment. So anybody like to speak on an agenda item or any matter that they'd like to bring before the board? Please step up, sir, state your name and your address for the record, and then the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, uh, Dave Turwilleger, Seven Idol Park Drive, the village. Um, so, uh, congratulations, by the way, an hour and a half for an entire board meeting's great, keep it up. Um, I'm gonna try not to damage that trend, all right, but I, I'm trying to get information, okay? Yacht Club's been, uh, made me aware that we're hassling over the road down there, um, the yacht club's pending, um, a significant amount of money on trying to accomplish something, And the village is thereby spending some amount of money pushing back, because this hasn't come to an easy resolution. It's a little personal, because I'm paying dues to the yacht club, which means I'm paying for their lawyer. We're paying dues as, or taxes as a yacht club, so I'm paying for Joe through the yacht club. And I'm paying dues, or I'm paying taxes as a homeowner, so I'm paying for Joe again.
Not to make it personal, Dave. We don't wanna make it personal.
He is overpriced, I gotta say.
Jeanette's gonna send me a gift, I hope, right? But, so I'm paying for this three times, I really wanna know why we're fighting about it. Question one was attempted two weeks ago, which was to ask for, uh, via foil request, how much money has been spent by the village on this endeavor? Simple question, the phraseology was rebuffed in a denial, because we don't have a record of summarizing those costs. I followed up with a much, um, simpler request, pair of requests to file, which were requests asking for copies of invoices, bills, uh, receipts appropriate to these causes.
Let me just interrupt you, sir, did, did we get that follow-up?
Yes. That follow-up was, uh, I, I requested that dated, uh, as received on December 11th. And on the 16th, I received a response to those, that was actually a pair of requests. One pursuant to the road conflict, the other one pursuant to the church property lease, or the, uh, as you call it, the, um.
I'd have to go back and look.
Oh, Cornwall Landing, uh, lease property. So those were two separate requests, um, filed requesting explicitly copies of bills, invoices, and receipts. And I broke it out in asking for appraisal, bills or invoices, uh, surveying bills or invoices, legal, uh, associated costs, uh, bills and invoices, and, uh, any other, uh, unmentioned on, uh, previously, unidentified, uh, costs that the village has incurred. Interestingly enough, the statement in the response letter that I received on December 16th said that no such records exist, again, repeating the same mantra and saying that you don't have to create a record when one doesn't exist. Uh, I beg to differ, that we have bills come to this, this address.
Can I?
Yeah, you okay with the, can?
Um, absolutely, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah, yeah, so, I think there might be a little confusion perhaps about what foils came first and the responses, because I don't think I saw them, but, just to be very, very clear. If you're requesting kind of a summary or anything, under the Freedom of Information law, the village doesn't have to create a record, all right, so that, so that, it's an accurate, maybe it's not a wonderful response, but it's an accurate response. And yes, you are certainly entitled to, uh, request, you know, uh, all of my bills, the surveyor's bills, every, all of that you would be entitled to. The one thing that, you know, whenever you're requesting attorney's bills, what we would have to do is print them all out for, you know, some period of time, uh, and then they'd have to be redacted. And there'd be some heavy lift on, on your end too, because really then you kinda have to go through and add it all up to the best of, you know, your ability. But yes, absolutely, you're entitled to that.
Okay, um, so that, that contradicts then the response that I received two days ago, three days ago.
Well, that's, if it does, you know, I'll, I'll work with Doris and we'll go, we'll go through them, because, right, a summary record doesn't exist, you don't get it. If you request the other ones, you're entitled to those, they would have to be redacted, but you're entitled to those.
Okay, and I do have copies of all the requests and the responses with me, I'd be happy to share them with you, Joe.
Sure, actually, maybe if you gave them to Doris, uh, so she could match them up with her records. And, and I'm sure she'll scan them and send them to me.
I just wanna make this piece clear here, I remember the one, cause it came addressed to me, and that's when I reached out to you.
Correct.
I remember that first one, and then that went to the, Doris is our foil officer, and that went to her. Then I saw the response from council, and that's when I called you and said you are going to get a response. And the letter that was, that explained why he couldn't get what he was asking in that form. Correct? But that was the first request, right? He's saying that there was a second request that came in, were there, were there two, four requests?
There were actually three, the first one on, three separate ones, on December 1st, it was a, the one that you responded to, Jim?
Yep.
And you called me about?
Yep.
Okay, uh, and I directed it to you instead of, uh, you know, erroneously, instead of to Doris. Um, and you explained that, so, um, after I received the denial of that request based on the, you know, don't have to create records, um, acknowledged, you know, I don't wanna create work, but I wanna just receive the information that is available. So I broke it down into two separate requests, and one pursuant to the, uh, road, the other one to the church property, to the, to the land lease, and those.
You dropped those at the village?
I did, and those are dated and received on the 11th.
Okay.
I, I dropped those personally, and, uh.
It's my fault, I am not aware of that. Now granted, I don't see every four requests that comes into the village, it goes here. I'm made aware of it generally, but I did not know, other than that first request, that you had set a second and a third. So I apologize, I never saw them, and I will find out who received them and where they are, cause Doris is shaking her head too and saying, you're not aware.
I wasn't here that day, but I should've still received them.
Yeah.
I don't know.
So I did not know about that, I knew you'd made one request.
Okay, well, I did receive another, like I say, I received a response, another response then, like I say, I received my first response.
Who signed the response?
Well, the first response was actually, the, the response to my first request, um, came in like four or five days later. It, uh, was unsigned, um, it says your name at the bottom, Doris, but it was unsigned, and it's dated March 19th, 2018.
You didn't notice that we'd received it, correct?
Wait, wait, repeat that?
I had the wrong date on the.
Got it, got it, all right, yeah, so I get, I get, yep.
That was the request, that was the response to my first request, okay? And, but the content, the date, the date not, uh, not being relevant. The point being what Joe addressed, which is, we don't create things for every taxpayer in the community. We'd, we'd need twice the staff, right? Acknowledged, so the second requests then were these specifically asking exclusively for copies of bills and receipts, okay? Both of those dated, received on the 11th, and then in response to that, Jim, I believe this is the, these are the requests that you left me a message, I was working that day, you left me a message.
Yep, that I'd seen that.
That you had seen these.
Yes.
So you had seen those. Um, I believe your response with regard to those was that you had talked to Doris and, uh, Joe about them, and you said that confidential material couldn't be disclosed, so the, the request couldn't be met.
Under the terms, but I'm still operating off of the first foil request. I did not realize that that letter was in response to a second or third request. I thought that was the only one that had come from council, it's the only one that I saw. And that's when I called and said, that will be coming to you, and here's the outline of why we can't do it this way.
Okay, so that included you noting the confidentiality of content on receipts. So you did acknowledge that it was a request for a copy of receipts.
Right.
Which goes to, okay, if, you know, you, you saw that, so.
Yeah, I'm not denying, I saw the letter that you had originally sent addressed to me.
That one, that one did not request copies, that requested the summary report.
Then that's my fault, because I assumed this was responding to that, and I read the lawyer's answer on there, what our take was on the first matter and the second matter. But that was actually the second or third, or both, a response to those two, is that what you're suggesting?
Yes.
Okay.
Your, your message to me and the letter dated, and the letter from Doris dated December 12th, the day after these two were delivered.
Right.
And then, then there was a response dated December 12th, saying, not what you told me in the message that you left, the voicemail that you left me.
Right.
You used other reasons, workload for staff to make copies, to find receipts.
Yep.
The complication of going through a redaction process you cited in the message.
Yep.
None of that was referenced in this letter, this goes back to the premise that it required creating records, which I don't think receipts, uh, retention of receipts is not a create, you know, a record that needs to be created. That should be something you should be able to reach in a file and produce.
I understand, but what I was talking about in the message that I left you about confidentiality, he sends us a bill, there's 50 things on there. One thing might be related to the yacht club, I can't give you that, you know, a personnel matter that he weighed in on a sexual harassment case against so-and-so, and it has a name on there, I can't have that on there. Those are the things, that would all have to be redacted for confidentiality purposes. I don't care how much we spent, that, you're entitled to that, I just have to go by what he says, as far as what we can give you.
I think at the end of the day, Dave, what you asked for, you're going to get.
Yeah.
And ultimately, I, and I didn't, I didn't, I, I got the, the response on the 12th, um, I said, look, I'm not, or it was generated on 12th, I got it a few days ago. Um, I'm not gonna screw around with trying another, but playing, playing mail tag and trying to do this by paper is failing. I've been rejected twice, and I've had a plethora of excuses thrown at me for why it can't be done. And I've done the research, none of them acceptable, um, you know, uh, because I like to do research, just doesn't, won't surprise Joe.
No, it, it does not.
How about, uh, Smith versus the City of Rensselaer? Itemized bills prepared or submitted by an attorney working for an agency, our agency records within foil subject to disclosure.
I agree.
Redaction notwithstanding.
Right.
They are, I have a right to them.
Dave, you're.
I 100% agree.
Let's get them to me then.
You will get them, I think there's just a mis, what I would term, without even looking at them, a miscommunication from our office, but you're entitled to those records, and you'll, you will get those records pursuant to his redaction. And the other, uh, the other ones that we have to pick up for are the, uh, the appraiser and so forth, so you will, you will get those.
Can we simplify the matter in, in this way? How much has been spent by the village to dispute this shore road project?
As I told you on the phone call, when you and I spent 30 minutes on the phone, I want you to have it all. I have to go through him as far as what we are entitled or allowed to give you. I don't care, because this board, and I'm not speaking, if Bill Brain was here, has agreed, cause we've talked about it. We are willing to do whatever it takes to prove that that is our road, that we've maintained. And we want to look into renegotiating the contract that was codified in 1986 for $250 a year. I don't wanna keep, and, and maybe I'm reading it wrong, I don't, I don't, no, no, what I'm saying is.
You're sort of going off on a tangent though, on me here.
But I'm not, I want you to have everything that you're entitled to, but I don't fill that out. I turn to him and say, what can we give them, and then he answers, you're one of 20 people that foil stuff.
So far, all I've answered, all I've asked for is the expenses incurred.
Can I?
Joe, please.
Details, not details about the proceedings.
Understood, understood.
I, I'm curious how much we've spent on this endeavor.
My answer is, I, I, right now, I could not tell you how much we, we do.
Are we over five grand?
Oh, I have, I, I, I don't know, he would have to, he would have to.
Are we over 50 grand?
No.
No.
I mean, it, it's a relevant question, and before, before these guys continue spending their dues money, and you continue spending my tax money.
Dick.
I, I think it'd be worthwhile to have a discussion about what the justification is, but if we, if we're doing it for nickels apiece, okay, let's fight it out. But if we're doing it for thousands upon thousands of dollars apiece, especially as you're trying to keep the tax levy under control, fighting over something that is a, an amicably resolvable dispute seems absolutely absurd to me.
I, Dave, I totally agree, one, as I said before, you'll get, you'll get what you requested in your, in your, your foil request, subject to redactions. Secondly, this is not done in a vacuum, we've been, we've been negotiating with the Cornwall Yacht Club, and we came to what we thought was an agreement, okay? That then did not go forward because of us taking a look at the Cornwall Landing lease, separate from, separate from our negotiation with the Cornwall Yacht Club with respect to Shore Road. So once that came into place, that's when all this went awry, so to speak. So everything we've done with the yacht club, it has been in reasonable negotiations. So, so I, I know, I understand that you wanna know what the, what the, what the amounts is, and that, that's not a problem. But this isn't like, uh, this isn't, from my perspective, are we spending an enormous amount of money? No, um, and I think we both have justified reasons for what we want, and what we own. So I, I'm just telling you, just in, in general terms, so I just don't want people to understand, like, we've been fighting, you know, tooth and nail over this. We've had many discussions with the Commodore and council, and we did come to, we did come to agreement, that's why this.
And I, and I think we still do, we still do have an agreement.
We do, we still have, we still have an agreement, it's just an abeyance right now, so to speak.
Right. Okay, um, it, it strikes me, you know, the, the justifications that these folks have talked about at yacht club meetings, which I'm, I'm only back there for a, a brief period of time, uh, as a member, so I, you know, I don't know quite how long this has been going on, I've just sort of started paying attention, um, in the last year or so, and, and, uh, it, it just strikes me that the concept of that being a section of road, basically, from the point where you get past the Cornwall, um, the Cornwall and Hudson property, you know, the, the church property. Once you get beyond that, there is no public land accessible from that road, and there's, uh, it doesn't lead anywhere.
But it doesn't matter, Dave, it doesn't matter, if the road goes to nowhere, it's still, our argument is, I guess is the right way to say this legally, it's still our road, we maintain it. We put the guardrail up, the yacht club didn't, we pave it, we patch the potholes, and our guys go down there with their snow plows and snowplow it. The reason this started was because I said, how can they put a stop sign up when they're not the DOT or a, or a municipality? The reason this started is because people came to me and complained, you were not there at the time, you admitted that to me during our 30-minute phone call, when I tried to explain to you, when you said, here's what I'm hearing, and I tried to say, there's more to it than that. I don't wanna do this from the dais, but I'm happy to do it, because the next step for me is just gonna be to say, hey, let's do this publicly, I will write a treaties and I'll publish it on how this started. I have the receipts from when this started, chronologically go through this. Should we have attorneys involved? Nope, that wasn't my choice, that wasn't my choice. I wanted the stop sign taken down, and the no trespassing sign that was on village property. And then I wanted to establish, why are you allowed to park there, but Mrs. McGillicuddy, who's 89 years old with two arthritic hips, and goes out to volunteer at Bannerman's Castle, and has been parking there for 20 years, now she can't, cause the Commodore goes out there and say, hey, you pal, you can't park here, and you can't park here either, don't go this way. I get it, you have your own bathrooms down there, you don't want people going down there and using it, your property is your own. But it's our road, and that's our argument, and the board supports it. So when you say, how much money do you wanna spend? I'm gonna push and pursue this as long as it takes, so that it's good for you folks, so the answer is clearly codified, and for this board, cause people on the outside, people that are not members of the yacht club, say it's not fair. And then you have a deal, and I wouldn't have even known about the deal if I hadn't been pushed to doing this through litigation, which I didn't wanna do, I wanted to try to do it with Tommy and just settle it between the two of us. We couldn't do it, you have to go through the board of directors, then you have to go through the membership. It's harder to get things moved there than it is with a village board. So when I couldn't do that, the next thing was, well, then I'm gonna look. And when I found out that you had a deal for 100 years, and our interpretation of the law says, it's not legal for a municipality to enter into an agreement with anybody for 100 years, especially one that is a gift, it is a gift. Mary Donahue pays, pays rent to live on the property in the house that she was born in, because she rents it from the village, she pays fair market value. The Hudson Island Nature Museum, after I was elected mayor, there was 10 years where they didn't pay rent. Now pay rent to be there to provide a not-for-profit service for our children, visitors, and residents. So that's why, to your point, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of upset right now, because my understanding was, is that we'd gotten one request. I called you because I said, you're probably gonna have to resubmit this, cause the rules are what they are. I want to give you everything, and I told you that on the phone call, sir, I said, you're gonna get whatever you want. There may be a way that you have to do this, cause there are rules with foil or FOIA, the federal one and the state one. Just give us what we need on this, so we can make this copacetic, and we'll give it to you. But in answer to your question, if it's ultimately to find out, because your argument is gonna be, Jimmy, you're spending too much money, I can't talk about what your yacht club dues are, I don't know, I'm not a member. But when it comes to this, I'm gonna leave this office in 14 months, with the village knowing whether or not it's our road, and I'm going to make the argument that $250 a year for a piece of prime 150-foot waterfront property is not a fair deal. It's not square, and it's a gift from the village, and I shouldn't be giving a gift to you, not me personally, but the village shouldn't gift something to you that were not to somebody whose property that we own is named after her family or the Hudson Island Nature Museum. That's why. There's a lot more to this story going back the year before you were there, sir, that I'd be more than happy. I thought I spent some time talking to you about it, filling you in on the details. But we will get you every single thing that, and you know Judge McKay well, because he and I have spoken about, you know, each other. We'll get you everything that he tells us that we can. I want to make it easy.
Okay, um, I, I was trying to be very amicable about this, and, um, your message to me, after the second set of foil res, requests, which were acknowledged, you, you said it in the message that you, voicemail that you left.
But I just said to you, I made a mistake, because I thought that was the first request.
You did not say in that voicemail, you did not say in that voicemail that you were going to give me what I wanted, you, what I had requested and was justifiably deserved. So as your amiable nature, uh, has deteriorated as a result of this conversation, I, I take that kind of personally, because I'm asking for what I asked for in the way that you told me in that phone call to ask for it. Ask for something that I can give you, Dave. I did, and then you called me and left me a voicemail saying, no, you're not gonna get that either.
I explained to you the chronology and what happened.
Well, understand why I should be the one with the, with the elevated temper about this.
But I'm telling you that, I'm telling you that I thought it was the first request. Why didn't you call me back? I called and left you a message, we talked on the phone for, I can go back and look at the phone records, 30 or 35 minutes, and I filled you in on everything I knew about this entire thing. When I called you again, which I didn't have to, you can deal with the foil officer. When I called you again, just out of an abundance of goodwill, you didn't call me back.
Okay, you're, you're, you're-
I'm what?
Frustrating me with, um, the verbal beration.
I'm not berating you, I'm just, I'm answering what you said.
Let me, let me ask you a question. In that message you left me, because I, and I wasn't gonna go here, but since you've escalated the tone, I want to go here. Um, in the message you left me, uh, I'm sorry, no, in the first conversation we had, you said that the first response to this, the original foil request, was to check, check yacht club membership roster to see if I was on it, and you did not find me on the roster. You use that, you, you pointed to that as a starting point in our conversation. Under what authority does a government agency have access to, has a right to?
Your website?
Use-
Your, your website?
Our website is not public.
In 2018, you have a roster posted, it's on your website.
I don't believe that that's ever been public, but if, if it was, I'm mistaken.
Sir, apologies to you, it's on your website. I went there and pulled it off of open source. Of course, when I'm talking to somebody and I'm making a phone call to somebody that I've never met before, I'm gonna say, well, who is this person? I spoke to people, and they said, hey, this is who this guy is. You weren't a member of the yacht club, you told me, you just became one recently. I said, you weren't a member, I didn't know who you were. So, is that right for me to do that? Of course, why would it not be?
If it's in the public domain, sure.
I'm telling you, it's in the public domain, I got it off the internet.
Well, not, not something that I can access without a password.
It's on the internet, the 2018 yacht club roster is on the internet. I published, I printed it out.
Well, I'll have to go look for it. I do look forward to receiving the information on how much this has cost me as a taxpayer.
We will make certain to let you know, I'm gonna go, everything's gonna be done through him, and whatever he tells us we're allowed to do, you will have that, okay?
Alright, thank you.
Alright, thank you, sir. Alright, sir, Joe, nothing to add?
No, Dave, if you have, if you have the extra copies, I'll be glad to take them. I'll work with Doris, try to figure out the-
Doris, can you make copies for Joe?
Anyone else for public hearing? Not public hearing, for, uh, public comment? Seeing no one else, then we will go to board comments, and we will-
Happy holidays, uh, thanks everybody to, uh, who ran the, um, all the festivities down at, uh, the Storm King, the menorah lighting, all the stuff that happened this weekend, thank you.
Thank you, Dave, Lori Beth?
Um, just thanks to everyone working hard today, um, on this storm. I was thinking about you when, uh, I was in my new stormhouse, thanks.
Did a great job. And Deputy Mayor Kane?
So thanks to TBW Water and Police Department for today, um, especially the Special Events Committee, the Cornwall Youth Committee, and the last thing is, um, myself and Lori Beth are, will be running, um, for the trustee position once again, so we'll be running together. Um, we'll come back with you with the date, um, anyone who's interested in running, you can pick up the packet, I believe, around January 1st, I don't know what day of the week, January 2nd, that would be, I guess. So I just wanted to announce that.
Alright, piggybacking on that, thank you again to, um, all the departments in the village and what they did during a very stressful day today, and for taking care of it with aplomb, thank you. Um, any alibis from the department heads? Nothing? Michael?
Uh, just for an FYI for the communities, the annual New Year's Eve celebration, it's on Sunday, the 31st. We're having in conjunction with the Cornwall Youth Committee.
Good reminder.
The junior ball drop will be from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. Um, there'll be two fireworks shows that evening, one for the kids, much smaller than another one at midnight.
Yep, thank you, Mike. Yep, we'll do, we'll do two of those, it'll be the first time that we actually do a kids' ball drop, so, um, be interested to see how that works out this year. But thank you to the Cornwall special, Cornwall Hudson Special Events Committee. And without any further ado, no more alibis, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting, we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, I'm gonna remind everybody here that the microphones, until this clicks off, are still on, so anything you say will be picked up. Alright, thank you. Joe, you and Doris.
I don't think they understand.